For everyone who's on. Just to let you know, the recording is for people who registered but missed the meeting. So we're not like posting publicly or anything like that. It's just to be emailed out to those who registered for the meeting. So they can watch it and all of you as well, if you wanna re-watch it or anything like that. All yours, Peter.
All right, and thank you. I appreciate that we have a mighty crowd here tonight. Virtually as it is. So, welcome to our London local town hall meeting regarding the emergency. We face in our public healthcare system and our hospitals. Before we get started, I'll introduce myself. I'm Peter Bergmanis, the co-chair, and I have two other great co-chairs with me, Shirley Sherman in St. Thomas area and Jeff Hanks. And we're really working hard in this area and we've been doing it for many two decades, I guess now. So before we get into the formal part of the ceremonies, I will request that we do a land recognition. And with that, I will do it with the utmost respect that we recognize that we are broadcasting from London, Ontario. On the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe and Iduna-san, say, Hi-Dashoney. And Luna-Pewak and Chinotin peoples at the forks of the Shockin-ZB. Otherwise called Antler River, the Thames River in colonialist terms. And an area subject to the dish with one spoon coming into Wampum and other treaties. So as you can see, I'm wearing my Medicare is not for sale shirt. I've been wearing this shirt for twenty years. I have cleaned it though in the meantime, but I never dreamed I would be wearing it still for this many campaigns. And guess what? Each time we pushed back and we succeeded in not losing that Medicare. We have to remind Canadians that instead of thinking of what private for-profit healthcare could do to help the public Medicare system, we have to remind them that sixty years ago, Medicare was brought in as a means of attempting to resolve the problems with the private for-profit system that dominated the Canadian landscape at that time. The one that the Americans are still struggling. We had to figure out how to get away from the profit-driven motive and how people were unable to access healthcare when they needed it because they weren't wealthy enough, weren't privileged enough. They're either that or they'd end up going bankrupt. All these stories that we keep hearing out of the US. That's why Medicare was created so that there'd be a single payer, public one that would permit all access and without regard for their wealth. For the past forty years, I've been working in, you've heard, status quo. Well, status quo in healthcare has not been like a steady increase in constant funding for our public system. Quite the opposite. It's been the complete utter gutting of. It's been defunding, it's been cuts, it's been downsizing, understaffing, contracting out. All of this has been under the guise of supposedly improvements. But the only improvements were obviously to help and assist the for-profit motives of the people wanting to make money off for the illness and disability and basically the humanity of their fellow citizens. Now, I'm gonna have the distinct pleasure of introducing, I think I have two speakers on tonight. Excellent. And they both are amazingly knowledgeable in what is going on right now. And I'll lead with our first guest, Alan Warrington. He's a vice president of the Regional Ontario Nurses Association in our area. And he's probably gonna outline quite a bit of what we're dealing with right now. So Alan, if you may.
Thanks so much, Peter. Sorry for my delay. I was having some technical difficulties there. So, good evening, everyone. My name's Alan Warrington. I'm a registered nurse and the Ontario Nurses Association Region Five Vice President, which includes most of southwestern Ontario. So the ONA represents sixty-eight thousand nurses and healthcare professionals across this province. And we also include eighteen thousand nursing students. I'm grateful to be here with you today and to have the opportunity to share what is happening in our healthcare system now and why we know that privatization is not the answer. Excuse me. At this point, anyone who's paid any attention has heard it before. Our nurses and healthcare professionals have been stretched beyond the breaking point. We've been in crisis mode for almost three years now. At some point, it's no longer a crisis anymore. It's just become the new reality. And I think we all know that this cannot be the new reality. We know from New Cana- from the New Canadian Health Institute for Health Information Data that Ontario is the worst in this country when it comes to RNs per capita. Across Canada, there are eight hundred and thirty RNs per one hundred thousand people. However, here in Ontario, we only have six hundred and sixty-eight RNs per hundred thousand people. That means that just to be at the Canadian average, Ontario would need to hire immediately over twenty-five thousand RNs. What does a staffing shortage of this magnitude look like in practice? It's become commonplace for nurses to be kept at the hospital for hours after their shifts are done. Because the next shift is short-staffed and it's not possible to safely transfer the care of their patients. We have nurses working in maternity wards. Excuse me. That should have thirty-five RNs on a shift, but the new normal is half that. It's seventeen or eighteen. We have hospitals where there are more vacant RN positions than there are even RNs on staff. We know that nurses are resilient and resourceful. We also put patient care first, and even in these extremely difficult times, our members find ways to provide the care that they know that all patients need and so greatly deserve. But the cost of this burden is taking its toll. Early retirements are going up. New graduates are rethinking their careers and leaving after only one or two years on the job. Nurses are leaving to work in private agencies where they can ensure that they have work-life balance. And there's a real cost to our healthcare system as this situation worsens. And now, the Ford government is using this crisis to justify their privatization agenda. Ford took an understaffed system and made it so much worse by introducing Bill One Twenty-four, which caps wages of many nurses and of healthcare professionals, violating our charter rights. And Ford is refusing to work with healthcare professionals to invest and implement a meaningful retention and recruitment plan. Leaving our system severely understaffed with no relief in sight. Across the country, Canadians pride themselves on our world-class, universal healthcare system. We believe that access to healthcare should be based on your needs and not your bank account. Nurses and healthcare workers are strong advocates for public, nonprofit healthcare because we know the devastation and the impacts of privatization. The most broken parts of our healthcare system today are the ones that are already privatized. Look at long-term care, home care. Private healthcare will take away from the public care, healthcare system by pulling resources and staff away from our public system. As nurses, we've already seen this as our colleagues have left the public system to go work for private agencies. And we can't blame nurses who've made that choice. The agencies let them choose their own hours. They can make more because conveniently enough, they're not subject to Bill One Twenty-four Wage Restraint Legislation. But there's a serious cost. Those agencies charge outrageous prices to the public hospitals. They don't provide pensions, benefits, or sick days for their nurses. This all undermines nursing as a stable career and undermines our healthcare system by siphoning off precious dollars to line corporate pockets. This will impact access and quality of care, and it will hurt patients who cannot afford to pay. We cannot let this happen. Ontario's public health system is not Doug Ford's to dismantle and sell off just as corporate buddies. Our public healthcare system has been built up over generations and it belongs to all of us. That's why the Ontario Nurses Association is here with you tonight. And we will continue to work hand in hand with our allies to fight for the investments we need in the public healthcare system so that everyone gets the care that they need and that they so deserve. Together, we will stop Doug Ford's plans in its tracks. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here tonight.
And thank you, Alan, very much for that very sobering description of what our situation currently is in Ontario. The London Health scene is no different than what you've outlined. Unfortunately, we have two major hospital conglomerates. London Health Sciences Centre, the largest of the two, and St. Joseph's Healthcare, which oddly enough is an ambulatory care centre now. And they are both struggling to recruit and retain enough staff to keep all of the wards and the surgeries going. It's quite a shocking scenario when we have idle ORs right to this moment in our public facilities. And yet, there is no money provided for them to ramp up to full capacity and get those staff in there so that surgeons can perform the vital work they need to do. We even have surgeons finding that they're going to private clinics so that they're moonlighting in those clinics and then performing surgeries we could have paid for already in the public system. So with that said, we also now will hear from the guiding light of our entire movement. Natalie Mara, the force in nature that has probably grown our movement to unimaginable heights. And we so are reliant on her and all I can say is we, we, I've never been more proud to be side by side fighting for what we fight for than with Natalie here. So Natalie, I'm gonna let you take on your amazing role as speaker tonight and carry on.
Alright, thank you very much, Peter, for the kind words. I'm humbled. It's actually very, very lovely. I've been scrolling through, looking at the people that that I haven't seen in a long time and, and all of you and new people whom I don't know. Welcome and thanks for being here tonight. There's a book. I guess I was thinking about what Alan was saying. I was thinking about what Peter was saying. And there's a book that the Ontario Coalition of Senior Citizens Organizations put together. And I actually just looked. You can get it. It's still available in a variety of different ways. It's called Life Before Medicare. And there was one story in that book that has always stuck with me. It was about a woman who, she had cancer. She was, it was a farming family. And these are stories in Canada before we brought in public Medicare in this country. And so she had cancer and she was dying and she begged her family not to go bankrupt in order to get her treatment. She didn't want to ruin the family and she knew she was dying anyway. And so she had her husband lock her, lock the doors and lock her in the house. And they talk about, I think it was her child that wrote the story, but remembering hearing her mom screaming in pain as she was dying of cancer in her house, not wanting to ruin the family with medical bills as she, as she died. These were real stories of life before Medicare. And you would never have thought that we would ever be so stupid to bring it back again, you know? But, but I heard now, oh, two weeks ago, from a woman whose friend is a farmer in Saskatchewan. And he needs an hip replacement surgery. And, and he was told, now whether this is totally true or not, we don't know, but I mean, obviously the weights are low. And he was told he'd have to wait one to two years to get it in the public system. He's lost the ability to walk. She says, you know, he's a dignified man. He doesn't, you know, he has to use a walker and he can barely go, you know, just a very short distance. He's not able to function anymore and obviously he's in pain. And, and so he was told if he wanted to get his surgery, he'd have to go and find a private clinic. And so he did in Calgary. And there he could get his surgery, but he would have to pay fifty thousand dollars in a private clinic for a day hip surgery. I mean, an absolutely ludicrous price. Probably ten times or more the cost of the public system, if, you know, like the OHIP covered cost of that surgery. And you know, in, in, in ways that are staggering to me now. The wheels are coming off of public Medicare. The private clinics are on an aggressive program to privatize. And it's not just privatize who owns the hospital services, the surgeries and the diagnostics. But it absolutely is an aggressive program to extra bill patients thousands of dollars for medically needed treatment. You know, when we won public Medicare in Canada, what that means, what public Medicare is, is the Canada Health Act, which says that no Canadian can be extra billed for medically necessary hospital or physician services. The principle was described by Justice Emmett Hall, who was actually a conservative judge. He was appointed by Deefan Baker. And what he described it was, is this, that, that when we're, when we're no Canadian should be faced with user fees at the point in which they're ill and they're aged and they're dying when they're most in need and least able to pay. That's Canadians decided to get together to pool our money in our taxes and pay for healthcare ahead of time so that we wouldn't face ruination or financial burden when we needed medical care. And, and that is what public healthcare is. So it is illegal in Canada. Let me just say this again. It is illegal to charge a patient for a surgery or a medically needed diagnostic test. You cannot do it. If you have gone for cataract surgery in a private clinic in Ontario and they told you you had to pay for your surgery, they are breaking the law. And I know it's happened to a number of you and it happens all the time. If they tell you you have to get an eye measurement test and that it's needed and that it's gonna cost you two hundred dollars, they are breaking the law. They are not allowed to do that. If they tell you, oh, you could get your eye surgery in the public system, but you'll have to wait a year or two. But if you pay for a lens upgrade of seventeen hundred dollars, you can get it at my private clinic. What are they doing? They're breaking the law. They are not allowed to do that. You can't attach a medically unnecessary service to a medically necessary service in order to get around the Canada Health Act and extra bill patients. And you know, don't feel bad because they're making a ton of money in the public system as it is. The ophthalmologists are among the top billers. Many of them make more than a million dollars a year. The average billing more than ten years ago for them was seven hundred thousand dollars. That's OHIP fees alone. That does not include, you know, the extra eye measurement tests and so on that they've been charging patients for. So all medically necessary hospital and physician services are covered. They're covered under OHIP. We pay for them in our taxes. And if they ask you to bring your OHIP card and they're charging you, they're billing both the public system and you for the same surgery and the same tests. It's outrageous. And where we have seen private clinics move in in Canada, this is what they're doing. In fact, we have called every private clinic across the country. We posed as patients. We said, you know, whatever they're selling. So it's if it's hip surgeries, we said, we, you know, we need a hip replacement surgery. We wanna jump the queue. How much will it cost? How fast can we get it? And we caught the majority, not a small number. The majority of the private clinics violating the Canada Health Act and charging patients directly for these services in illegal charges. And we also caught the majority of them trying to upsell all kinds of medically unnecessary stuff in order to make more money. And so let me just break it down for you. If you're a doctor or a private clinic owner who has a thousand patients a year and you charge every one of them two hundred extra dollars for an eye measurement test, you're making an extra two hundred thousand dollars a year, right? If you're charging two thousand dollars for the cataract surgery, you're making an extra two million dollars a year. And that is exactly why they're doing it. So we're now in this situation in Ontario where, as Alan described, I think, you know, in, in really heartbreaking terms. The Ford government is the latest in a string of governments, but absolutely has been instrumental in creating an unprecedented crisis. You know, for years, Ontario's hospitals have been funded at the lowest rate in Canada. When the Ford government got in, they cut funding to below the rate of inflation again. So real dollar cuts to the hospitals to force downsizing of the public hospitals. Of course, everything they move out of hospitals, they privatize, and that is the goal. And, and then the pandemic hit. They underspent the money every year during the pandemic by billions. In the last fiscal year alone, the last financial year, they underspent the healthcare, the projected healthcare budget by almost a billion dollars. At the same time, as the worst staffing crisis we've ever seen emerged. You know, almost a hundred emergency departments closed for periods of time because they don't have enough staff to run them. Maternity units closed, ICUs closed, staffing shortages, the like of which we've never seen. Every emergency department running without, with, you know, far too few nurses. All of that happening at, at a rate that has never been seen before in the province's history. And the government has really done nothing, almost nothing. I mean, they held many press conferences saying that they would bring in international grads or that they would fast-track international grads. That's a handful of people. It is nowhere near the numbers that we need. While we're losing, still losing thousands of staff. As Alan said, they kept the wage caps on for the same people who literally have risked their lives through their whole careers, but even more so during the pandemic for all of us. And, and then refused to actually use the funding that we had to support the public hospitals. At the same time as they were refusing to fund the public hospitals, they doubled the funding for the private for-profit clinics. That's in the last quarter of the last financial year. Then they bumped it up by, oh, another, I've forgotten what the total was, twenty, twenty-four million again. And then in January, the Ford government made their announcement that they're moving forward with privatizing the core surgeries, the core services of our local public hospitals. This would be a terrible policy at the best of times. It would be a terrible policy because the private clinics extra bill patients because they violate the Canada Health Act because their business model, it turns out, is to bill OHIP. They want OHIP, right? They want the public system because that provides their bread and butter. But they wanna bill patients on top of that because that maximizes their profit margins. And they do it even when it's against the law. In British Columbia now, we have a private clinic owner, Brian Day. I won't deign to call him Dr. Brian Day because I don't think he deserves it. But, but he owns private clinics there. Five patients took the B.C. government to court because they were charged thousands of dollars for surgeries in those clinics and that that's illegal. They were required to sign waivers saying they would keep secret the amount of money that they were charged for their surgeries in these clinics. I mean, it's just ludicrous. The B.C. government tried to audit the clinics. The Brian Day refused to let them in. He's the owner. And so they went to court, they fought it out in court. Ultimately, the B.C. government won the right to audit the clinics. These are clinics where physicians are billing the public health system as well. One month of records, sorry, maybe someone could mute that line. In one month of records and it's partial records for this clinic, they found five hundred thousand dollars, half a million dollars in thirty days of charges to patients for surgeries. Half a million dollars in a month, sixty-six thousand dollars of suspected double billing of patients in that clinic in one month of partial records. So Brian Day responded to this by bringing a court challenge to bring down the laws that forbid extra billing of patients, to bring down the laws that protect single-tier Medicare in British Columbia. He lost at every level of the courts in British Columbia. He's now brought it to the Supreme Court to challenge public Medicare in Canada and bring down the laws that protect single-tier Medicare in Canada. If there was ever need for proof that the private for-profit clinics pose an existential threat to our single-tier public healthcare system, that is it. And more than that, you already have a massive staffing crisis in the public hospital. A nurse is a nurse is a nurse. An MRI technologist is an MRI technologist. There is no second labor force in Canada. So when, as soon as you open a private clinic, the nurses that they get, the MRI techs that they get, the health professionals and so on, come out of the public hospital system. You lose them from your local public hospitals to go to the private clinics. But they only take the lightest, easiest care, the profitable patients. The private clinics don't take patients who have COPD for surgeries, for example, or heart arrhythmias or who are overweight and have diabetes and other comorbidities who are likely to code or more at risk on the operating room table. They only take the high-volume, fast, easy surgeries. And they leave the complicated ones behind for the public hospitals to do with less staff and less funding to do that. It's not an add-on. It's a takeaway from the public system. And it threatens huge new costs for patients, the like of which Canadians are not used to and have never seen. We already know from our last round of calling all the private clinics that patients had to take out loans to pay for these surgeries. They had to go without vital things for themselves to pay for these surgeries. We hear from seniors who have not been able to buy Christmas gifts for family members because they had to pay for a cataract surgery or who've had to spread their household bills over more months and get behind or go use their credit cards to pay for the extra costs in the private eye surgery clinics in Ontario. You know, I started with a story about the woman who didn't want her family to go bankrupt because she had cancer in the life before Medicare. But I wanted to tell you kind of in visceral terms what's going on because everyone thinks, I think the biggest challenge we have is everyone thinks that this will never happen to us. It's not gonna happen to us again. But I've done this now for twenty-six years. I have never been so frightened for all of us. I've never felt that we were so on the cusp of losing our public healthcare system as I do right now. If we allow the Ford government to turn over the ownership and control of our public hospital services to private for-profit clinics, we will not be able to protect single-tier Medicare. We'll never stop fighting, but I don't know how we'll get it back once it's gone. You know, if you look at long-term care, my care is privatized home care, remember? And it's been a disaster ever since. He privatized long-term care and we've never been able to get the for-profits out since then. We can't even regulate them up. You know, it's just been almost impossible to win any positive change at all. So I'm beseeching you, please join us in the fight back to stop this. And I'll just end with what that is. So they didn't give us any democracy in this. There was, in fact, the government lied in the lead into the election. I don't say that lightly. They literally sent out a spokesperson. We were warning the public that they were gonna do this. And they sent out a spokesperson who said categorically, we are not expanding the private clinics and hospitals and we will not do that. And then right after the election, they announced that they are going ahead to do it. So we need to instill democracy in this process. We know the vast majority of Ontarians do not support cutting and dismantling and privatizing our local public hospitals. We know that. We need to make it visible. We need to make it impossible for them to ignore. So we're calling a massive referendum across Ontario for the end of May, May twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. That's a Friday and Saturday. What we'd like to do is have on-the-street votes outside coffee shops and drugstores and corner stores and every busy area of the city and the communities around as possible. We'd like to have workplace votes in every workplace we can, unionized or not. So in the hospitals with the nurses and the, the health professionals and the hospital workers in not-for-profit agencies, you know, in unionized manufacturing plants in local businesses, everywhere we can get them in the two weeks leading in, so the last two weeks of May. We'd like to have online voting for the last two weeks of May. We'd like to have votes in the colleges and universities before they end for the school year. So that would be in late March before they go into exams and, and their school year. Could we get voting stations in busy traffic areas around campus? I see there's some medical students on here and other students, you know, could we do that in your universities? Could we do that in the community colleges as well? Can we make it as visible as possible and get as many votes as possible? We believe, we now have almost a million members in the Ontario Health Coalition. We believe that we could get a million votes, fifteen million people in Ontario. We believe that we could get a million votes, fifty million people in Ontario. We believe we could get a million votes to stop the privatization of our hospitals. In Ontario, a big petition is about twenty thousand signatures. No, no one ever gets a million people to do anything like this in the province. It would be massive, it would shake any political party. And I know that we could do it if we work together to do it. So just before I end, I wanna show you a very quick, it's three minutes. Video of what it kinda looks like on the ground, we've done this before. We rolled back the privatization, the P-three privatization, it was another kind of form of kinda halfway between fully public and pri- fully private. Hospitals that was um, tried by previous governments. We held um, local referendums in eight communities. Um, uh, and uh, and um, the government stopped. They uh, they phoned me and they said, what's it gonna take to get you? We, sorry, we had about two, a hundred ninety-eight thousand people vote in those local votes. In eight towns and um, the government said, what's it gonna take you to get you to stop this? Uh, and we said, we'll stop the P-threes and they didn't do it entirely. Um, but they did roll back massively the privatization in the deals. And uh, and so um, it was very effective. So I just wanna show you, cuz it's kind of exciting and so that you can visualize what we wanted to talk with you about. What this looks like, so I'm just, is that okay Pete? I'm just gonna share my screen. Okay, just quickly. Um. Okay, just a second. Okay, so this is from Kingston. Where they did the P-three privatization, a privatized P-three hospital referendum, which they called a plebiscite. We're gonna call it referendum cuz it's a bit clearer. Oh, sorry, I keep doing this, I have to optimize it for sound, just one second. Okay.
This looks very much like an election campaign, except it's not. It's a plebiscite vote that's actually citizen-run, not government-run. It's put together by the Ontario Health Coalition, asking citizens if they want a public or a private hospital.
If, well, the drivers have extra ballots, so if they need more, like if they've run out in their trucks, then I will let them know you guys have some extra.
The phone's been non-stop, people are interested, uh, they want to learn more. Um, they've been very supportive of the campaign, we've had very little people coming in upset about what we're doing.
Well, we're holding a community-wide plebiscite, which is a community-wide vote, like a referendum. Only it's organized by Citizens Group, by the Kingston Health Coalition. Um, about the future of the new hospital in Kingston, whether it's gonna be a public, not-for-profit hospital. Or whether it'll be built as a P-three, privatized P-three hospital. With thirty-year-long contracts with a private for-profit multinational consortium.
Uh, some people wonder how this affects healthcare. They say, well, the healthcare system remains public because nurses and doctors will be paid by the government. But the model of the P-three hospital is a, is a step in quite a dangerous direction.
Some of the more conservative members of uh, council have tried to argue that. Uh, we shouldn't have any role in it as municipal councillors because it's a provincial issue.
So we're very concerned in the city of Kingston about uh, well, about uh, where are the, where is the money from our property taxpayers going? And uh, it turns out that it's going to uh, to fund a consortium. That over time will make twelve percent uh, on their invested money. So uh, that twelve percent is, part of that twelve percent is coming from our property taxpayers.
It's been really positive, it's actually really cool, people are pretty excited, especially when they hear that there's a hundred and eighty other volunteers out there on the ground uh, doing this as well. Uh, it's just such an incredible feeling of solidarity, everybody. Even though they've been out there in the cold for an eight-hour day, they're, they have no problem doing it, they're having fun and having a great time.
It's been very hectic, super hectic, um, we had three volunteers here for most of the day. And we barely had a chance to have a drink of coffee and we're right here in Tim Hortons, so that just goes to tell you how busy we've been.
All the businesses have just been so warming and welcome to allow us to be able to sit up these tables. It's been a great, great um, great commitment by the businesses here in Kingston.
It was a huge victory and you know, you talk to people on the street, everybody knows what's happening. It's now become a public issue and it wasn't two months ago, nobody even knew we were getting a new hospital. So we've elevated the debate and the public sort of discussion and the democracy around this healthcare policy to a level which is phenomenal. That's the value in a sense of, of validating that whole discussion, all that work that was done. And then as the next step forward, we're gonna be able to say to the government and the politicians, you know, this community really cares. We want a public healthcare system.
So there, yeah, I know um, you did kind of a smaller one in London too, a few years later. And we actually stopped the liberals from trying to privatize the hospitals and uh, the hospital surgeries and diagnostics as well. Um, but I just wanted to show you what it looked like and so I was hoping. You know, could we talk about that tonight? Can we, because it gives us a way to do mass public outreach, to make visible people's opposition. We would do lawn signs leading in, um, so we had these ones. Sorry, I'm just gonna share my screen again. Uh, oh, get it over there. Yeah, down there. Hmm. It's not working, sorry. Um. I don't know why I can't, I wanted to show you the lawn signs. One second, sorry. Um, so we could uh, put up lawn signs again and these were the ones that we had before the election. So we would do basically this, like for the old ones. Can you see this? Um, for the, for these ones that we already have, we could just put the voting date on it, like vote on um, May twenty-sixth, twenty-seven. Um, and uh, sorry. Um. Um, we can also print new ones to go out as well, um, with that. We have leaflets, we could go door-to-door with leaflets. Um, you know, in every community group, every union meeting, every seniors organization meeting, you know, all of that stuff. Churches, other faith organizations, you know, get out the word everywhere and ask people to come out and vote. And um, there's, there's sort of, there's a role for everyone in this. Like if you have a corner store that you go to frequently, or if you're a member of a legion, can you ask them, could we have a voting station there? To protect our public hospitals and stop them from being cut and privatized. Or if you, you know, um, know the owner of a grocery store or some other busy place like that. Um, we need to collect ballot boxes, which we, we just use. I don't know if you remember in the video, but then we just use LCBO boxes, like wine bottle boxes and the like. Covered them in brown paper, put um, duct tape around them. And then when we're done, we sealed them and people signed them and then the seal would not be open until we counted. We need things like um, uh, retired politicians, you know, MPs or MPPs. Municipal councillors, of schoolteachers, lawyers, et cetera, to count the ballots. Uh, and other people to scrutiny, we need to do that in a public way so that it's accountable and so on. Um, we need to get into the schools and uh, try and get votes happening in all of the schools that we can. So there's all kinds of things that everyone could do. So I'm hoping as we discuss, if you are willing, so the dates again, sorry, to walk through. The voting dates, dates would be Friday, the twenty-sixth and Saturday, the twenty-seventh of May. And be, that's the weekend after the long weekend, so the long weekend, um, the Monday, the May, the twenty-second is the holiday. So we wanted to do it after, but we wanted to do it while the legislature was still sitting and we'd have enough time to do the lead-in. If you're willing to volunteer and have particular things that you wanna volunteer and are just willing to volunteer, can you put it in the chat? So there's a little, like on the bottom of your screen, for those not used to Zoom. There's a, in the middle or so, there's a little icon, it says chat, if you click on that, you can type a message in. And just um, just say I'm in, because we have your name and we have your contact info. Um, if you live in a town outside of London. Um, but would like to help, it might be able to help in your community, could you just say what community you're in? That would be great. If there are particular things you wanna do um, to help or skills that you have and things, or things that you're interested in. Could you identify what that would be? That would be uh, amazing as well. And so leading in, what we would do is one big, very concrete um, meeting about how to organize the referendum. Like what to do, how to organize it and really break it down. That would be for all of southwestern Ontario and we would do that in late March. Our plan is to have all the materials ready by the beginning of March. We need to get the votes in the universities and colleges in late March, so we need to do those fairly quickly. They need to be, you know, on, on their way now. Late March, big Zoom meeting for all of southwestern Ontario. And then rolling out of that meeting, in-person meetings in every town that we can get. We'll deliver the materials to you and then we'll organize very concretely. The launch and the campaign on the, on the ground in London, let's say, or Stratford or, you know, the areas around. So we would do an in-person meeting in London, beginning of April. And then we would do a launch together with all of the coalitions and towns across the province that are joining in to announce it to the media. Like this town is joining in, that these are the dates, et cetera, these are the um, voting locations in our community and so on. Um, that would be like early, mid-April. Go door-to-door, leaflet everywhere, you know, get volunteers and so on and so forth. Um, and by mid-May, be holding workplace votes everywhere we can. Online voting, advanced polls, and then May twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, the big on-the-street votes. And then we would announce the results uh, the Monday or the Tuesday, so that's the twenty-eighth or the twenty-ninth of May. And bring like that million ballots to the legislature while they're still sitting. The House rises um, June the first, so that's, that's the plan. Um, and so we're hoping that people will be interested in doing that and working on it. And I just have two other things. In the meantime, the government's gonna bring in new legislation to facilitate this, I mean, their plan is underway. But they're gonna bring in new legislation, they start sitting February the twenty-first. We expect the new act to be brought in within a few days of that. We'll obviously have to fight that, we're gonna need to, you know, storm the galleries and fill the galleries and, you know, massive, massive uh, you know, protests and those sorts of things. But they do have a majority and even if it passes, don't lose hope. I mean, we can still stop them from doing it by moving the mass of public opinion, but we need to do that. And tha- that's why we're having the referendum, so there'll be things in between as well, and particularly around um, the legislature. I, I'll just end with this, in Alberta, the Klein government. They tried to privatize, they um, they imploded the Calgary hospital, they blew it up, you can look online. They, there's a big kind of macho thing and it was this, the revolution, you know, and that they were in the nineteen nineties. They were kinda like Alberta's Harris government. Arch privateers, cuts, you know, tax cuts for the rich and for corporations, cuts to public services and so on. And so they um, uh, they imploded the Calgary hospital and they brought in an act to, to bring in um, private clinics. They allowed private clinics to spring up for MRIs and CTs and the clinics were charging patients for their MRIs and CTs. And the Alberta Friends of Medicare collected the stories and the receipts, the bills from uh, thousands of patients. And made a complaint to the, to the federal government and complaints to the Alberta government filled the legislature. I remember pictures when they were trying to pass, I think it was Bill eighteen or something. The, the private bill, the privatization bill, people were hanging from the banisters in the legislature. People were lined up down the prairies and, you know, you can see for miles on the prairie and you could uh, cars lined up. To go, go into the legislature to protest the privatization of their healthcare. And ultimately, the Klein government was forced to pay back every patient. That had paid out of pocket for an MRI, for medically needed MRI or CT scan. And Ralph Klein eventually said, um, uh, he likened public healthcare to the electrified third rail. Of Canadian politics. And I always love that, you know, it's, it's like the railway has the two tracks that the cars go down and then the third rail that carries the electricity. And I thought, you know, that's what we have to do, we have to electrify the third rail, let's make them terrified to touch our public healthcare. That's what we're trying to do, thank you very much.
And thank you Natalie, wow. Uh, you have electrified me and I'm sure there's a few people in the audience that are probably pretty excited about what you're suggesting we're gonna do here. There is absolutely no room for uh, apathy, for sure. This time, uh, the populace will have to become dedicated citizens to the things that are so important. And Canadians value their Medicare, probably as the number one social program that we spend our resources on. So uh, I thank you for putting out your thoughts and our hopeful goals to achieve the ends. That we need to push the Ford government off of its track. And uh, we are certainly now opening uh, the floor up to the discussion from all of you lovely guests that have come here tonight. Uh, I am on a phone, so I can't see all the chat, but I've been seeing some pretty good stuff going by there. Volunteerism and et cetera and strategies. But uh, perhaps Britt who is hosting could maybe read some questions or see if there's any people uh, who wish to put up their hand. With the icon and uh, ask a live question.
So the, um, at the bottom of your screen again, you'll see that there's a reactions button, it has a little smiley face with a plus. If you click on that, it's um, there, you have the option to raise your hand. It's at the bottom of the little tri- rectangle that comes up, it says raise hand, you can use that to raise your hand if you have a question. And Barb Hogg and Jeff Hanks have questions, so maybe Barb first and maybe Britt. If there's, I see the chat is like so exciting, thank you to everyone volunteering and um, please give your ideas and stuff in the chat as well. Um, but Britt, maybe if there's our particular things to highlight in the chat, um, you could uh, you could look through and raise them. We'll save that chat, like we'll save it, I'm gonna go through all of it, we'll all go through it. And we'll make sure we capture all the volunteers, all the ideas and so on. So Barb Hogg first, then Jeff, then Jerry, and Britt, maybe you could get ready while Barb is talking.
Yep, will do.
Hi everybody, um, thanks for taking my question. Um, it's actually more of a comment, I was doing some phoning to let people know of our um, town hall that's coming up. This is really, really important to get this message out, there are still people that don't know what's going on. I asked a lady if she would like to attend a town hall and she said, what would I need that for? I have a doctor. I have, I, I'm okay, so. I did explain a little bit to her about what was going on, there are so many people that still. I don't know about this and that's why we're really trying to get the word out, so please, please, spread this to your friends, your family, anybody that will listen to you. Tell them what will happen. If anything, their taxes will go up, even if they think they can afford healthcare with their, they've got the money. It's, a lot of people still don't wanna pay their, in behind the scenes, higher taxes. So that, and that will happen, even if you don't think you're paying for it at the site. You will be paying for it behind the scenes, so uh, if, if they can't. Um, think about other people and how it's morally wrong, they can at least think about their pocketbooks, but they need to get. We need to get this message out to people, please, thank you.
Yay. Thanks Britt, Britt, Barb, sorry, is the co-chair of the Guelph or is a member of the Guelph Health Coalition. And Britt is our staff person who's on the line too, sorry, I should have introduced her. So Pete, I don't know if you can see the hands, I've got Jeff and then Jerry, then Hisham, then Angela. Do you want me to continue or can you see them?
Uh, I ju- I really can't, so you feel free.
Okay, so Jeff, Jeff Hanks.
I'm just wondering uh, if we could do like a telethon, like for twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours, just hammering home what's happening to get the word out. Maybe use like a hashtag electrify the third rail or, or something that lets people know the vote's coming and, and do it as a fundraiser. Uh, something to raise awareness and just have the live stream all across Ontario, have uh, all the health coalitions participate, maybe to raise awareness, that's just a thought.
Oh yeah, they um, the, like a Facebook livestream, twenty-four hour, well, maybe we could make it twelve hour. Does that seem like a telethon? Okay, definitely, we'll schedule it in there, thanks Jeff. Jerry and Britt, did you find anything yet?
You're, you're.
Okay, Jerry, you go ahead and then we'll wait for Britt to indicate.
Okay, uh, I, I wanna ask a question about if we keep moving toward privatization. Uh, is there a chance we can't go back because of the free trade agreement? And uh, and also the second part is, uh, do we know of corporations moving in, not just individual clinics? But corporations that are, that are moving in and getting ready to, on a bigger scale, to, to move toward owning a number of private.
On a bigger scale to to move toward owning a number of privatized clinics, you know.
Yeah, yesterday, actually, we were looking at, sorry Pete, I'm just gonna jump in here, tell me if you have, if you wanted to first, sorry. Yesterday, I was just.
I can, yeah, I'll I'll supplement.
Okay, I was just looking at uh an email that my the the chair of the Ontario Health Coalition and I were going back and forth. So a couple of days ago, Clearpoint has bought the Don Mills Surgical Center, we only have two. Private hospitals in Ontario left that are functioning, the Shoalace and the Don Mills Surgical. If you have COPD or if you're overweight, you could, the Shoalace won't give you a surgery and they charge for um like everyone for private and semi-private rooms and. So that's how they make their money and they, so they only do, they won't do like diabetes, overweight, et cetera, people. They only do the easy hernias, and if you get in trouble there, they call an ambulance to send you to a proper hospital. Um, so that's the model of them, but under um the Private Hospitals Act banned all future private hospitals in nineteen seventy-three. Um, and so they were grandfathered in under uh under that act and no new ones could be built for good reason, right? We built for a hundred years a public nonprofit hospital system, but the Don Mills Surgical Center. Kind of quietly before we realized it was happening, got sold to first. I think it was called Allegra Health, it was an American multinational company, and then it got sold on again, and now it's been sold again to. Clearpoint, which is an equity, it's like a private equity firm owned company. Um, and yes, so the Canada Health Act only protects services as being public if they're public, and if. A private um American company, you know, wants to make a challenge to say that the market isn't open to them. Um, they can, once they're in that field, so yes, it does absolutely pose that risk. Um, now I will never say that you can never get them out again, these are public policies made by human beings, of course, they can be changed. But it would take a near revolution to get them back out again, and we'd have to, you know, get people to do it and uh and you know, who wants to go there, like, let's just save the. Public hospitals, but it's a very good point.
Yeah, and I could just add on the local scene there, Jerry uh. Need to look no further than the Cardiac Fitness Centre that was carved out of the London Health Science Centre is now under the umbrella. For-profit Advanced Medical Group out of Calgary. Uh, just recently, the announcement of the fertility clinic sold to private interests at Omega Fertility Centers. And that was under the umbrella of the L H S C. And of course, we've been contracting out uh Gas Works to uh Baxter, which may take over the. Home dialysis, it's all happening right now, even without what Ford has been pushing. And of course, the more he defunds those public hospitals, the more incentivized they will be. To remove any service that isn't an absolute acute care service, so it's terrifying.
Thank you, thanks Jerry, and um so Britt, do you have? Are you gonna put something in the chat when you're ready?
No, no, I'm ready, um, so there's just a few questions, Brenda wants to know, will there be an online voting option?
Yes.
Um, Angela wants to know if there's gonna be any upcoming protests.
Yes.
Uh Lori uh wants to know if we can provide them with the dates for demonstrations. Um, as soon as possible, and then there's been two questions about whether we're working alongside the OFL's enough is enough.
Okay, so on the enough is enough campaign, so the Ontario Federation of Labor has a campaign called Enough is Enough. Um, like, I don't really know, I like, I believe that they have a day of action, like protests across the province planned for June the fifth. I don't really know what else is sort of in the campaign in between. But um we have asked the Ontario Federation of Labor um to support, they have said that they will support this. Um, and uh and you know, we're we're working on making that sort of meaningful, like concrete in as many. Possible ways as we can, and we've also asked the uh unions, private sector unions like. Uniform and the steel workers and UFCW, could we get votes into the grocery stores through you? Could we get votes into the auto plants, could we get votes into the steel plants and so on and um and we're just working that through, but it looks like. We have an agreement, so we'll work both locally and centrally with unions and so on, and then we also locally and centrally need to work on. You know, I think every Alzheimer's Society and every epilepsy association and every diabetes association, I mean, all of us have an interest, right? So could we get votes in all of those, the non-unionized workplaces and the local stores and local businesses and so on? Yeah, okay, so we have, sorry, Hisham and Jeff and Jerry, can you lower your hands, you might? You just use the same thing, the reactions button, and then Hisham.
Oh, um, yeah, I just wanna say it's really amazing to uh, you know, see the energy and to see everyone out today, to see Natalie and to see. Uh, Peter and Jeff um and many others um and really agree with what Peter said, the speeches are really electrifying and. Um, you know, um, we're really ready to um. Uh, help out where we can, so so I'm part of the Ontario Medical Students Association along with uh my classmate uh who's here as well, Sadia. Uh, we're both medical students in London at Western. And um, you know, as an organization, like in terms of the O M S A, we we definitely support. Um, this work and and wanna, you know, uh be uh of of as much help as we can. Um, in terms of uh collecting signatures, that's definitely something that we could help out with, so Sadia and I kind of. In uh late March before uh typically the semester is done around mid-April, but. Uh, late March even uh into May, there's there's summer schools, so a lot of people are around, so we could help with tabling uh here at Western. Um, and in terms of just like other ideas, we're we're thinking about um if, you know, there would be kind of. Um, like something specific to like students in healthcare uh programs. Uh, to kind of uh, you know, get them organized and get them involved in the campaign. Uh, whether that's like a petition specific for them or kind of. Um, you know, uh, you know, we kind of just brainstorming other ways, I mean, we could get more students involved. Um, and then the other part is there's other uh medical students for sure who are part of the O M S A that would be interested to. To get involved in in this campaign and uh whether it's through like op-ed writing or other ways as well, so. Um, yeah, happy to um, you know, see that there's um, you know, the the energy of what's going on and and that. Um, you know, we're just uh looking where we could possibly support and um, yeah, uh looking forward to to what's ahead for sure, it's amazing.
Yay, Hisham, thank you, so absolutely, yes, one. Maybe we could do a press conference with the Ontario, like the Ontario Nurses Association, the student nurses. Um, maybe we could do it with the like the student nurses, the Ontario Medical Students Association. Any other of the other sort of major students um group uh associations for. Healthcare workers or health professionals saying like you are, we are the future of healthcare. We absolutely don't wanna privatize and, you know, pushing back on this, that would be awesome if we could do that, so let's try. And then we should create some like material specific with you guys, I think. My niece, by the way, is at Western and my nephew, so they'll help table, I just volunteered them, and um uh the other thing is uh. Um, could, I think we wanna get those votes on campus like in March, April, if we can. Just to get, well, there's like the bulk of students there, so maybe we can work with you to do that. If there's any other ideas about students, like working with students, um, this is not university students, but. High school students have to do volunteer hours, so anyone with kids, maybe um they could help leaflet or they could help. Um, staff um voting stations and things like that um is part of their volunteer hours, just a thought. Um, okay, and I'll think of a little bit more about it, Hisham, and maybe we can meet up and um make those things happen. I don't know if you have anything, Pete, I don't wanna totally take over here, sorry.
Oh, I was very welcome to you uh taking over, believe me, so it in in London, that's great, uh. And we're in touch with Hisham as well, so I'm familiar with a quite a number of our. Folks on tonight, um, that, yeah, more the the more welcome as well. Uh, so yeah, just uh keep those ideas flowing and uh if you wanna add more, Natalie, feel free.
Okay, so maybe that sign-on thing we can do in tandem with like a press conference from the, you know, student doctors. Nurses, health professionals, et cetera. Um, so Angela, then I have, I've got Angela, Lori and Elliot, okay Pete, so Angela first, Angela Cavallin? Cavallin, sorry.
Hi, hi, sorry, it was like you might be talking in the background, sorry. I'm, so I'm new to London and I have a lot of friends and family in other cities, is this movement happening specifically in London or is this? Um, an organization that's happening, like and different people are are heading the 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 movement in different cities.
Yeah, it's happening all across Ontario. And where we don't have local coalitions, if there are a few key volunteers that even just wanna get one or two voting sessions or help out in their town. Um, then we're linking up with them, so um if you have particular communities where you know people that might wanna help. If you wanna just make a note in the chat and we can be in touch with you about that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
I love the work, I'm very excited.
Oh, good, me too, like, it's fun too, that's the other thing, I mean, you might as well have fun if you gotta do this.
Sorry, where do I go to sign up to volunteer?
So just um, can you put it in the chat?
Okay.
Just put um like volunteer or something in the chat and it'll show your name and volunteer, so that's perfect.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, and everyone knows how to use the chat, right, if you move your cursor, if it's hidden, there's a toolbar across the bottom in the middle slightly to the left, usually. There's chat, click on that and then you can type a note into the chat and send it. Okay, Lori?
Um, hi, everybody, good to see you all, um Natalie, I wanted to bring to your attention um. PSI, Public Services International, um which I'm a member of, there's, they actually have thirty million members. Across a hundred and fifty-four countries, um they have deemed. Um, April seventh as People's Health Day globally. Um, there is a hashtag, um, our health is not for sale. That we are going to be using um for this, so I don't know if this is something maybe the Ontario Health Coalition. Um, could jump on for that date and maybe um use that for the card signing. Um, and and things as well, um, I I'm happy to, I'm gonna follow up with PSI and see what. Um, literature and materials that they have available. Um, at present, and I'd be happy to send you anything I receive on that. Um, but they are also pushing the World Health Organization going forward um to deem April seventh. Um, yearly like that that day of the year as the um People's Health Day globally.
So cool, what a great idea, so for sure, I mean, we should talk about, like, do we wanna do. A protest or something on that day and, you know, talk about being in tandem with people around the world. I'll talk with our friends in the UK, like in England, see if they're gonna do anything, cuz it would be very cool if we could link up and even. You know, share video feeds from other places and so on, so.
I have um contacts in England through PSI and many other regions, um.
Okay, well, we went over to try and, we actually went over to help create the Save the NHS. Movement there, which sort of was modeled on us, and um our friends are are sort of the 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 founders of that, so let's be in touch, Lori. And you just put that like.
April seventh, if people could mark that.
Okay.
Um, in their books, we're gonna plan some fun April seventh.
So maybe, a- a- and yeah, I don't know, I don't, like locally, do you wanna do some kind of protest or some kind of event or or?
Locally or provincially.
Well, I was gonna ask each town, like as as we go around now doing town hall meetings, I'll ask everyone if they wanna join in that day, that would be awesome.
Thank you.
I can definitely say we should get in on that, uh Lori, yeah, you you're a great valued volunteer and colleague in this. We should do a London to London.
Right, that would be fun, I'll talk with John Lister in England, okay. Okay, awesome, thank you, Elliot?
Hi, so yeah, I just wanted to uh say I'm glad to hear from someone else at Western that's uh trying to do something that the medical students are. Uh, in on this, I am also at Western, but I'm just a humanities student, so I'm kind of out of touch. So um I was just wanting to um let Hisham and the others that are at Western know that um. I am currently in communication with the Society of Graduate Students. Um, trying to see if there is something that can be organized campus-wide and what needs to be done to. Get something in place, so I am going to also try to work on uh seeing if we can arrange for voting booths. Because I I feel like voting booths could go um at multiple locations across campus and we definitely want to get um. All of campus involved in this because this is, you know, their future that that we're concerned about, so. Um, if anyone wants to try to reach out to me and keep me in the loop with what's happening at Western, I wanna do my part to support that.
Yay, Elliot, not just a humanities.
Would you be able to uh make sure you put your contact in the chat there for our records there, Elliot?
Sure thing.
Lost it the last time, okay, thank you.
We have it because you registered, so if you just put um student at Western in the chat, then we'll know. Who you are, and maybe we could create as like students for Medicare chapter at Western. That would be awesome, we have students doing a U of T and it um. Oh god, what's Ryerson called now, Metropolitan University? Um, and maybe George Brown, so we're just sort of getting moving on that, so maybe we can link everyone up, you know? To support and work together, okay, that's so exciting, Jean?
Yeah, hi, thanks Natalie, um, I'm I'm gonna be actually grateful when you come to our chapter meeting on March the seventh. At our hall because now you'll be able to talk a bit about what the heck's going on. And get all our retirees motivated and uh hopefully in the St. Thomas, London. Tilsenberg area, Rodney area as well, that uh they'll be able to get off their butts and. And either carry a sign or do some voting or they're able to volunteer, so looking forward to it, Natalie, thank you very much.
Oh, me too, so I was gonna say, like, we, when we meet um on. The Zoom for southwestern Ontario, we should do some mapping together, like that meeting will be no speeches or anything, just kind of concrete. Um, mapping, like, so who lives in Tilsenberg and might be able to like help anchor things there, who lives in Ingorsol, you know? Et cetera, et cetera, and then, you know, sort of get that all mapped out, so we can figure out where we've got key contacts. Where we've got um groups and then brainstorm, you know, places to ask for voting stations and get that all underway as quickly as possible. Um, but people can start now as well, so I hope that everyone will join in that because. Um, like, we just, we need to kind of all together figure out how we're gonna do this in the biggest way possible, all the ideas are really amazing. Jeff has his hand up again, Britt, is there anything else there in the chat?
Not questions.
Just the really fantastic stuff that makes, that is inspiring me, thank you so much. So uh Jeffrey, go ahead.
I remember Lyndon McQuig's book, The Sport and Pray of Capitalists, and it talks about Sir Adam Beck and how he traveled across Ontario. Trying to stop the syndicate from privatizing uh Niagara Falls uh power. And he finally stopped them and a conservative uh premier in Kitchener. Uh, threw the switch and said, we'll no longer be the sport and pray of capitalists, but I'm just wondering if we should be uh. You know, you could train people to go travel across their city, do multiple talks to let people know what's happening. Um, you know, to go to little towns and stuff, and I I know. Uh, it'd be great if you could do it all, but I'm sure you, if we trained ambassadors or something to to travel around and tell people about the. Maybe that might be something we could do.
Totally, so we're thinking of doing two big trainings in March. And then in those big Zoom meetings, obviously, I'm not gonna be able to do in-person meetings in every town, right? So in those big Zoom meetings, so the one late March for southwestern Ontario, we need to identify people who can go out and sort of anchor. The town hall meetings in as many towns as we can do in southeast southwestern Ontario. So if people are willing to do that, it's kind of like what I would do in this meeting or in another meeting, you would do in that local in-person meeting. And we'll bring the materials down like to London and to Chatham and Sarnia and Windsor, and then from there. You can grab them and distribute them through through all these in-person meetings, even if they're small, you know, like a group of five in. A little town can get two voting stations and some volunteers and, you know, probably. You know, hundreds of votes, you know what I mean, it will all make a big difference. Okay, cool, thank you. So I think if there's any, like, really, it's about getting your ideas now. And um getting sort of lists of volunteers and thinking about how to. Get as many votes as possible in as many plates places as possible, and then definitely the more voting stations we. And then definitely the more voting stations we have that are good, busy, the more vote we're gonna get. So if you have any good spots in London or in any of the towns that you live in. Um, like that is gonna be critical and it's gonna be critical that we line those up in in March. We can't afford to do a Canada post mailing. No, we may be able to do some. Like if there's a, if there's a, if there's a newspaper that goes to every household, you know, sometimes there's a weekly or something like that or a. Penny saver, we may be able to put like the a a kind of one pager with. Like just a few sentences, you know, like don't, you know. Say, say we're public hospitals or don't privatize our hospitals and the list of the voting stations for your whole region and get it delivered. You know, in the middle of the penny saver or like the weekly newspaper that goes to every household or something like that. We may be able to do postal walks if they're, I don't know what the price is, I think they're kind of expensive. Maybe someone locally could look into how much that would be, but we should do whatever is the. Like whatever we can afford of those options. Just to get out the list of the voting stations. We also need to raise money, so like Jeff's hang Jeff's idea. I mean, whatever, however much we raise is what we can actually do, really. Okay, anything else? So tomorrow, we'll send an email out to everyone who registered for this meeting and all of you with some very concrete things, like we're asking people. Just quick things, can you sign up on our website to be a Medicare defender? We're trying to get thousands. Um, you know, um, if you are have a seniors organization or retirees group. Could you bring a survey that we have on the website that is asking people what they're being billed in private clinics, like those stories in the chat from earlier? For people who are like in Ontario, we don't have hip and knee surgery places and so on yet, thank god, we're trying to stop them. But we do have cataract surgery clinics, that's mostly what we've got for private clinics and they're charging people all over the place. So we're asking. Seniors organizations especially to distribute those surveys and get people to fill them in and send them in so we can gather the concrete evidence of what's happening. To people. Um, and uh and then also um like the very next steps in the campaign. We'll send out those people asking for dates for protests. As soon as we know when that legislation is introduced. We'll know when the protest needs to be, but and it will be fairly quick at Queens Park at the legislature. But then it sounds like locally the next one would be April the seventh and I'll try and get the whole province to do it. And maybe we can really get something kind of fun and international out of that. Good? Oh, Donna Fay? Go ahead.
She's the only thing I'm saying is like backhanded compliment. When I was calling around out of the group that I talked to, which was not very many cuz it's such an old list. Two of them said, I know, I know, I know, I get more than one email from them every day. And I thought, oh geez, you know, maybe we should look at that. It is annoying. Lots of people, they just get so many e-mails and then they go, okay. Get me out of this and they cancel it. So I just advise us to be careful with that.
Yeah, we try not to send more than one email in a day and we try not.
I know, but one a day is a lot. Yeah.
I know, yeah.
All right.
It's a hard balance. But what what's good news is we don't have people in droves begging to be taken off the list or anything. And for those who are new. Please don't worry, there are many days in which we send no email at all, like it sounds much worse than it really is there. Okay, thanks, Jerry?
Yeah, the I I it's a personal question. I wanted to go back cuz I did have eye surgery. And um I my one eye had uh the retina was oblong. Uh, instead of round, so I could uh a toric lens would correct that. But I did have to pay for that. So are you saying that? You know, O-Hip covers the basic lenses, but anything over and above that, I would have to pay. Are you saying that? That lens I should not have had to pay for, that improved lens?
So this is the deal. They say like it's an improved lens. The lens that you need for cataract surgery is covered. The lens that you would need for any other medically necessary surgery is covered. The other lenses that they sell are not necessarily better lenses, like some of them may or may not work. Some of them are, you know, dubious. These are like, remember the laser eye surgery clinics are the ones that were doing surgeries that made people go blind in the nineteen nineties, right? So it's all kinds of, it's not better. They tell you it's better than, it's different than. And it may do different things or and it may or may not work. You gotta do your research on it. But what is medically necessary and shown to work, like the evidence supports, is covered by O-Hip. So the way it works is there's a panel of specialists, like so for um eye surgery, they're ophthalmologists, they're the. Eye surgeon, they're the eye surgery specialists. They review, so there's all kinds of technology companies and other people. You know, drug companies and so on, trying to sell stuff to our public health system and get covered, right? Because they would make money from that. And so there has to be an arbiter, so there's a a panel of specialists for each specialty and they review. Uh, you know, all of these things, they look at the um evidence, so the studies, the, you know, the quality of the studies, they look at whether or not. Each treatment shows efficacy that is doing it, does it give better outcomes than not doing it? Does it cause harm, etcetera? And those things that show medical efficacy are covered and those that do not are not. So that extra eye measurement test that all, you know, practically all the private clinics sell to people. And even some of the hospitals now are allowing the um ophthalmologists to do it. Um, like it's medically unnecessary, there's no value added by doing that test, so O-Hip doesn't cover it. It is comparable to the existing O-Hip covered test. The lenses are the, like a mixture of. They either are not about medical necessity, like they might be vision correction lenses or something else, or they might be like. You know, those blue lenses, what are they supposed to do? Reduce the glare at night or something, which I, you know, some of them are quite controversial about whether they work or not. So that, you know, they sell them to you as if they're better, but be very cautious because it's sort of like going to a mechanic. And they tell you, oh, your rotors need to be, you know, ground or whatever, you really have no idea. It's like that. Do your research and don't um and like a like a credible. Source on the internet is not a private clinic, right? Like do your research and only only. Like actually accept credible sources or ask your family doctor even better, whether it's really medically necessary or not.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I mean, it shouldn't be, right? The way to stop this is to just not turn the ownership over to private clinics. Because once you do that, it just, it doesn't end all the junk they're trying to sell people. Okay, anyone else? Okay, Pete, over to you.
All right. Well, uh, that should conclude for our evening tonight and I appreciate uh. The wonderful support that Natalie and Alan have provided for us here. Uh Natalie, again, always the guiding light. So many great ideas. I really actually feel excited about democracy again. This is not gonna be an eighteen percent turnout, it's gonna be a hundred percent turnout. And uh I think we're gonna definitely uh show that uh if a conservative thinks they're gonna do this. And for warn any other political party of the same, they will never see power. And uh the people are gonna show them what power is about. And Medicare stands for that very democracy and the values we hold dear. So uh for us in the London region, we'll be having, and uh this is tentative right now, but there'll be a. Follow-up meeting for February twenty-third, next Thursday. Six thirty PM, the link will be shared. Hopefully, some of you have left your contact information for us so that we can reach out to you as well. And bring you on board. Natalie uh doesn't want us to be an expansionist coalition, but I'm afraid uh this. Area certainly is an expansionist coalition. We're ready to encompass all the little towns around us, help them get off the ground. And uh they'll develop their own councils of their own. So looking forward to working with all of you. And again, weighing heavily on Natalie's shoulders, but we are gonna win this fight, so I thank you all.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Peter, so much and Jeff, your co-chair and Shirley Sherman, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. How and Ellen, thank you. Britt, you're gonna save the chat, right? Britt, thanks for being here with us. And for doing all that wonderful. And thanks, everyone, for your comments. I'll look forward to reading them after the meeting. Bye, everyone. We'll see you very soon. Yay, good night.